Thank you. I do want to say two things. I want to let you know what I was thinking about during my moment of personal reflection. And they had to do with two events from Saturday, June 6. So I'll start with D-Day. Seventy-six years ago seems so distant now, but yet so near to us. Just as the beaches of Normandy seem so far away from the shores of our own St. Lawrence River, they are close to our hearts, particularly every June. Because on June 6, 1944, and in that place, young people from Cornwall and SDG, of the proud SDG Highlanders Regiment, were part of history's longest day, when the future of our world stood in the balance. They overcame their understandable dread to engage and overcome a regime built upon hatred and oppression. Their courage contributed greatly to turning the tide of history and to wash away the bitterness and sadness which had taken hold. We will always remember them, with pride and with gratitude. Let us continue to be inspired by their resolve. Let us honor and cherish their dedication as we struggle in these times to overcome division between us and establish the foundations of peaceful respect and understanding among us all. The other thing I would like to say is that I want to commend the work of the young women who organized the peaceful Black Lives Matter March, which took place on Saturday in our city. They worked hard and communicated with the police and with the health unit to be as transparent as possible during these challenging times. I commend the good work of the Cornwall Police Service during the event, and I also fully respect that many people did not agree with the holding of a protest at this time. It has led to some frustration and to some difficult conversations, but in true Cornwall fashion, we are working our way through those conversations. I am glad that we are having them. Merci encore une fois à ces jeunes femmes exceptionnelles pour leur courage et leur transparence. Counselor Gardner, can you lead us in the singing of the National Anthem?
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us cabine. Car ton bras s'est porté les pays, il s'est porté la gloire. Ton histoire est une époque n'est plus l'âge exploit. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akraasasne. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Klima, present.
Counselors Claude McIntosh-
Present.
Elaine McDonald-
Present.
Sid Gardner-
Present.
Dean Hollingsworth-
Present.
Counselors Cadylinne Abay-
Present.
Glenn Grant-
Present.
Todd Bennett-
Present.
And Eric Bergeron-
Present.
And Counselor Dupell, are you on the phone as well?
Present.
And Counselor Towneale has sent his regrets. Additions, deletions, or amendments, Madam Clerk?
I have one, Madam Mayor. It's Resolution 2020-03, Leave of Absence for Counselor Justin Towneale.
Any other additions, deletions? Counselor McDonald.
I would like to, uh... Sorry. I'd like to suggest that we move the petition for Sunday Transit Service to Communications.
Any other matters? Adoption of the agenda? Moved by Counselor McIntosh, seconded by Counselor Abay. Any discussion? All in favor? Counselors on the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. Any disclosures of interest? Committee of the whole. We need a motion to go into Committee of the whole. Counselor Grant, Counselor Bennett, all in favor? Counselors on the phone?
In favor.
Minutes. Meeting of Monday, May 25, 2020. Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor? Carried.
In favor.
Thank you. Those were the in-camera minutes. Do we need another motion for the regular minutes, Madam Clerk?
No, they are the same one, Madam Mayor. And this evening, we have no presentations or delegations, leaving us with one consent report. Ribfest 2020: Use of Parking Lot at Cornwall Civic Complex, with a recommendation that Counsel refer this request to Administration for a report.
Moved by Counselor Abay, Counselor Bennett seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Carried.
Our next item is a resolution, limit on new business motions. Whereas currently, there is no limit on the number of notices of motions and new business motions for submitting at a regular meeting of council by a counselor and no deadline. And now therefore be it resolved that each counselor be limited to a maximum of two notices of motion and new business motions combined, presented at a regular meeting of council. Now therefore be it further resolved that each notice of motion and new business motions shall have a seconder prior to submitting it to the clerk. And now therefore be it further resolved that notices of motion and new business motions shall be delivered to the clerk no later than 12 noon on the Tuesday preceding the date of the intended regular scheduled council meeting, so that it may be included as part of the agenda package and so that proper notice can be given to the public.
That was moved by Counselors McIntosh and Counselor Gardner. Okay, so debate. We'll start with Counselor McIntosh.
Basically, we regard this as more housekeeping than anything. The idea that somebody can present as many motions as they want, notice of motions. I think it's, the last time we had five, and that's what brought me around to proposing this. And it was an hour and 45 minutes we spent discussing the motions. And I'm thinking, we have staff that starts work here at 8:30, and it's 9:30 at night and they're still here. I think that this way of streamlining our meetings, and that's one way to do it. The idea of presenting the motions to the clerk so they can be included in the agenda, I go back to a motion that was a page and a half long, and we received it the same night. It was sitting on our desk when we showed up for the meeting. And we actually debated that, which I don't think was right. But anyway, I think this streamlines things. Nobody broke any rules. You can present 62 motions if you want under the old rules, but this streamlines things and it'll make our meetings more functional, I think.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have a question of the clerk in this regard, because I think I'd like to have clarified for us the difference between a notice of motion and a new business motion, because it's always nice to have a heads-up on what's going to be discussed. And my understanding is that if there's a notice of motion, the material is simply presented, such as the one... There's one coming up on the fire burn ban, for example, and it won't be discussed tonight, but we're notified of it. But it seems to me that when we were presented with all those new business motions, they were discussed on the spot. And so I think we're handicapped as counselors if, you know, there's a topic on the table and you've had no heads-up, no opportunity to research, no opportunity to even see what's already on the books in terms of bylaws and what overlapping or conflicts there might be. So is this appropriate to the clerk? Like, do we actually discuss new business motions on the spot?
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Mayor. So in new business motions, what you should be debating on that is whether you want a report from Administration or not. It shouldn't be everything that's in the new business motions. So that's a routine matter. You're asking Administration to come back with a report answering all the questions in the business motion. A notice of motion is when you're amending, repealing, altering a bylaw, a pre-approved budget, or any motion previously approved by council and where the motion to introduce any measure of change. So those are not discussed the evening of. It is read, given public notice, and is discussed at the next regular council meeting.
So then a new business motion, though, it should always then just ask for a report, and it shouldn't ask for any specific action or response on the part of Administration?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That is the final line. It's always that council direct Administration to prepare a report on this matter.
And the matter shouldn't be discussed, or might be discussed inadvertently, or has to be discussed to see if a report is warranted? Like, it seems to me it bypasses the opportunity for council to have a warning that a topic is coming up and to be prepared for it. But if that's what the rules are, then I guess that's what the rules are.
So at the end of a new business motion, Madam Mayor, it says the motion is to request a report. That is the motion being approved that evening.
Okay, so I think I'll conclude. It's kind of a gray area. The debate is whether or not we get a report, but we go into the material that the report is going to cover anyway, don't we?
So the Chair sometimes allows that, because this is a very engaged council. And that has been the process so far. We are going to be reviewing our procedural bylaw. That's coming up. So these discussions will continue. And those questions are very relevant, Counselor McDonald.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else wants to speak on the motion? Counselor Hollingsworth?
A couple of things, Your Worship. Thank you, by the way. A couple of things that are noteworthy. First of all, in terms of a notice of motion, you have two weeks for the community to offer their opinion. So it's not as though it's being dropped in your lap. Second of all, in terms of, it's already articulated. Traditionally, and I remember a lifetime ago, the agendas would actually suggest that new business was routine in nature, traditionally so, asking for a report or asking for something simplistic that could be done without a great deal of, you know, perhaps a change in the seating plan or something like that. So that being said, when we're debating a report, we're not debating whether something is a good idea or not. We're simply debating whether we want a report. So to suggest, "Well, it came from nowhere and I wasn't prepared." Well, the point of asking for a report is to have Administration give you the information you're looking for. So it's not as though it's, you're being, changing the world that night. You're simply saying, "Admit, tell us if this is a good idea or not." The thing to keep in mind was pointed out is, "Well, we don't want to have things dropped in our lap." Well, I've got a leave of absence here that I just happened to see this evening when I came and sat down, and that's fine. So there's something that's kind of just came to me. There's another one here somewhere that I just noticed. Oh, we just voted five minutes ago, or three minutes ago, on whether to add to consent something with regards to Ribfest. It just happened to be on my desk this evening. So Administration does that, and I accept that things crop up at the last minute, and we add them to the agenda, and we debate them, and we carry on. If somebody has a problem with the nature, or feels uncomfortable with the nature, and I've heard the Mayor, Your Worship, say many times, a motion to defer is always in order. And so if the majority of council said, "We don't really like this. We're uncomfortable with it. We're going to defer it for two weeks or a month," or whatever. So to say, "Well, I don't want to have to debate this or discuss this this evening", it's a little bit bogus, because you can make a motion to defer at any time. So if you're uncomfortable, feel free to knock it back a week, a month, a year, whatever it takes. So I'm not, no disrespect to my colleagues, but I'm not on board with that as the principal argument for this motion. I don't like the idea of limiting counselors in terms of how many motions they can make, because if somebody talks to me 20 minutes before I get to this council meeting with an issue that might be really important, what I have to say to them is, "Ah, sorry, I already have a notice of motion and a new business motion, so even though what you have to say is important, I can't really discuss it this evening, because we've approved this thing that says we can't do it." And then, of course, I can make a motion to suspend the rules, which means instead of six people supporting it, I now need seven or eight people to support it. And if those, I might have a majority of council in favor of what I want, but I don't have the seventh person, so that means I'm waiting. And if a motion or something is urgent, if I had something that cropped up in the course of the meeting this evening, I would have to wait two weeks before I could bring it as a notice of motion, which means I'm now waiting two more weeks for the, basically to have the debate. And if I need a report, I might be waiting six to eight weeks before I have any chance of being able to answer somebody, because we've decided you can only have a couple of motions per council. Your Worship, I get that sometimes we go late. It's the nature of business. There was a time around council when we would go to midnight, and I showed up at 5:30, 6 o'clock on the construction site to pour concrete. So my point is, it's the nature of government. It's not always clean. And I'll quote one of my colleagues who I have the greatest respect for, Counselor Dick Obrey, who used to say, "Politics is messy. It's how it works." And sometimes it's not clean, and sometimes it drags on. You've probably all heard of stories of the senior legislators going, playing kazoo's till midnight to try to filibuster a law. That's how democracy works. It's kind of the coolest part of it. So to support this motion suggests that we're sort of putting a bit of a muzzle on counselors who have too many motions, because we want to get out at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock at night. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful to my colleagues, but there's no way I can support it. Debate is the essence of democracy, and every motion, to me, should at least be heard, regardless of whether it's convenient or not. That being said, the other thing that's noteworthy, Your Worship, and you can correct me if I wrong, but historically, if I'm not mistaken, the procedural bylaw suggests that every member is expected to only speak once on any given motion. And I know there are many counselors in my short two years here who often speak more than once on a motion. Kindly enough, you entertain that, but if we're following the rules, that means you get one crack at it, and it's over. But we don't do that. So, or haven't. And I think it's incumbent upon us as members to honor that rule as much as the Chair to supervise that. So we already kind of have this gray thing, and so I can't support it. I get where it's coming from, to try to streamline things, but I just think democracy doesn't always, it's not always streamlined and quick and easy, so...
Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe you are being disrespectful. If you were, I would let you know that.
I would appreciate it.
Right. So the next one on the list is Counselor Grant and then Counselor Gardner. Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support this because, for efficiency purposes. I like having efficient meetings, and sometimes these new business motions create unnecessary delays. And if it's important enough, get it to the clerk in time. We also have other procedural, in the procedural bylaw, that you can only speak for three minutes, and we sure as heck don't follow that on a regular basis.
Correct.
So if we, to me, I'll support it, because if you're proactive enough, you should have stuff ahead of time, prepared, and given to the clerk, so it gives her an opportunity to get to us as well. Thank you.
Counselor Gardner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I seconded the motion, because I want a discussion about it, a debate about it. I'm not particularly fond of the fact that we're going to limit to two motions. However, there are times when there are motions brought forward, and the CAO might back me on that. When I have an issue, I will call the CAO, or whoever I need to talk to, to get an answer rather than make a motion. And as an example, I don't want, with all due respect to everyone, there was a motion put forward with four, or I believe, five bylaws that were to be dealt with, with that motion. The problem with that was, and the reason I bring up speaking to the CAO or whoever, is that I would have called bylaw and said, "Is there a bylaw for this, 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 and this?" And if there is, and if I want to tweak something, then maybe one of those bylaws needed to be changed. But to speak for three-quarters of an hour on something that I could have found out before the meeting, which is often why I don't speak, because I find out what I need to know and what direction I need to take. So I'm going to support this. I think five motions, four motions, six motions, way too much.
Any other debate?
This one, ma'am.
Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you. So I'm going to vote against.
You're going to have to speak up, Counselor Bergeron? Please speak up.
Can you hear me now? Is this better?
That's better.
I'm going to vote against this motion for a few reasons, but ultimately, I don't really like motions that put limits on counselors doing their job. And this is, this is what I get from, this is how I read this motion. I think two is completely arbitrary. I don't really understand why it would be two. I definitely can understand the desire for procedure. I will remind everybody that as a council, we did pass four motions. So the will of council was that we actually do this. Anyway, I'm trying not to take this personally. I hear some comments here, but at the end of the day, if there's a seconder and a motion, I will gladly debate it. If I don't think I have enough information, I will defer, make a motion to defer. If I'm opposed to it, or I don't feel like I know enough about it, I will vote against it. But if someone is willing to second a motion, I'm always willing to debate it. So I'm opposed to this. I mean, I, we're also in still a state of emergency. I think council needs to be creative, needs to move fast, needs to be flexible. And this does the opposite. So I'm very much against this motion.
Any further debate? Counselor Bennett?
What concerns me about this motion is, as Counselor Bergeron just said, we're in a state of emergency. We won't always be in a state of emergency, but things happen. And if I happen to have two motions on the agenda tonight, and something happens that's a big concern to the city, what are my options? Call another counselor and ask them to put it forward? I'm just worried about that, but we're going through a procedural bylaw shortly, and I really think the place for this discussion is there. We're kind of jumping the gun. If we're going over our procedural bylaw, then let's, I would suggest that we put this idea there, and then it can be discussed when we do the whole procedural bylaw. I just think we're just getting the cart ahead of the horse on this one. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Sorry, Counselor Dupell, I'm just going to go to the point of order. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My point of order is this. I asked a question initially of the difference between a notice of motion and a new business motion, and what timeframe they indicated the debate would take place on. Now, this one is not listed as a notice of motion. It's not a new business motion. It's a resolution. So was there ever a notice of this given, and why are we talking about it tonight if, in fact, a notice of motion means we speak about it in two weeks' time?
No, I'll go to the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. This was read at the last meeting. Read and not debated as a notice of motion.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
So now, tonight, we're the second part.
So that becomes a resolution then in the next meeting. Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Dupell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. I will vote against this motion. I yes, the meeting's become very long when we have many motions, but I think that we're restricting counselors, and I think we all serve the public, and we could be at different times, such as we're experiencing right now in a pandemic situation, or we're in a state of emergency. So I will be voting against the motion to allow counselors to make motions, as many as they would like.
Thank you. Is there another point of order?
Point of order, Your Worship. Can I make a motion to defer? Does that supersede the debate?
You can make a motion to defer at any time.
Then I would like to make a motion to defer this motion, or this notice of motion, or resolution, until council discusses its procedural bylaw.
Is there a seconder for the motion to defer? Counselor Abay, now we debate the motion to defer. Counselor Abay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wasn't quite sure where I was on this motion coming into the meeting, as I support some of it, and I don't support other parts of it. And so my thoughts exactly were, you know, this would be really appropriate to discuss during the review of our procedural bylaw. So I want to echo the comments that Counsel Bennett mentioned, where this is really where we should be having that conversation. So I would certainly support the notice to defer this and have it, have a proper conversation when we're reviewing all of our procedures.
Any more discussion on the motion to defer? Counsel Bennett?
As I stated a couple of minutes ago, I think this is where this conversation belongs. And I just wish I was as smart as Counselor Hollingsworth to think to make a deferral.
Oh, you're smarter than Counselor Hollingsworth.
But I would absolutely support this motion to defer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bennett. Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we pass this tonight, it would automatically go with the procedural bylaw anyway, so motion to defer really doesn't matter, because that's where it would go, because it would become part of our procedural bylaw. So motion to defer one way or the other, it's still going to be there.
Did you want the clerk to comment on that? Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That is correct. We still have to have those discussions on the procedural bylaw.
Do we have a timeline on that? Do we have a timeline on that? Madam C A O?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think what we would like to do is we'd like to have a special council meeting with council for the procedural bylaw. It is a fairly lengthy item to go through. I think we should go through it each matter individually. There have been some changes that council has previously adopted, but I think that a special council meeting would be the best plan. And typically, we would look for a meeting, you know, maybe on a, perhaps a Monday evening when we don't have a council meeting. So, we might be, if council would like to deal with it this summer in July or August, then we certainly could schedule a council meeting, or we could do it another evening. Also, we could also invite Tony Fleming back to council to also be available to answer any questions. So, he assisted us with the procedural bylaw, putting it together and incorporating the changes that we have so far.
Thank you. On the motion to defer, so I still have a speaker's list, Counselor Hollingsworth. I'll let you wrap up, though. I'll let you wrap up. It's your motion. Counselor Gardner?
As I said at the beginning, I wanted, seconded the motion because I wanted information. And I think Counselor Bennett hit the nail on the head that it doesn't, shouldn't be long here, should be when we start reviewing our procedural bylaw. So, I will support the deferral.
Any more discussion on the motion to defer? Counselor McIntosh?
When did you say we're going to discuss the procedural bylaw this summer?
Madam C A O?
Through you, Madam Mayor. A special council meeting. So, today is June the 8th. We have a council meeting on June the 22nd. We might try and have a special council meeting on June the 29th for financial statements, if we can schedule it. So, it really would be kind of, I would come back to the mayor, to council, to try and indicate a date or a time that council would be willing to have a special meeting to review it.
So, if I get the drift of the conversation, if it's defeated, and I think it will be, it can be brought up at the procedural bylaw meeting.
So, do you mean the motion to defer will be defeated?
No, I'm just saying if the, if my, no, I'm going back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's deferred, it'll be discussed at the procedural bylaw. We've decided that if it, if the motion, original motion passed, it would still go to procedural bylaw meeting.
Through you, Madam...
Madam C A O?
Through you, Madam Mayor. If the motion passed, then we would follow that process for council between now and when the procedural bylaw was finalized. Changes could still be made when the procedural bylaw was brought forward to council.
Any other discussion for the motion to defer? On the phone, Counselor DePell?
No, I'm good, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Bergeron?
I'm good as well.
Trying to see who didn't speak yet. Counselor McDonald, did you want to speak on the motion to defer?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I'll speak before I let the mover wrap up. I'm going to support the motion to defer. I was not comfortable with the original motion. My days as a councilor are not that old, far away, and I didn't like the idea of limiting councilor's work. I do want to say this, though. I do encourage all of you to speak to each other between council meetings, right? It's very important that we speak to each other and that we speak to administration. And it was difficult to receive that many motions, there's no question, but I would never expect administration to respond in any way that isn't appropriate according to the workload of administration. So, I'm just saying that. And overall, this does speak to the lack of resources in terms of support of council ideas, initiatives, and strategic plan. You're going to hear me say that over and over again. Okay. Counselor Hollingsworth, wrap up on the motion to defer.
Just to the motion to defer, in essence, Your Worship, if we defeated the motion to defer, then supported the motion that's on the table, we would in fact be re-debating this motion potentially again at the procedural bylaw review. And in essence, what's curious, it's a motion to kind of streamline and minimize debate when in fact, to support it would mean we'd be increasing debate, just as a point worth noting, but I hope we can get some support to defer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth, for a motion to defer that was perfectly in order. In favor of the deferral?
In favor.
So, on the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Carried. Next item?
Unfinished business report, number one, business parking COVID-19, with a recommendation that, given the impact of COVID-19, council approved the following. A, continue to provide complimentary parking at all city spaces until Monday, June 22nd. B, provide first-hour complimentary parking at all metered curbside and pay-by-plate parking spaces from June 22nd until August 31st. And C, continue the city's current parking program starting September
Council? Counselor Gardner? What's your motion, Counselor Gardner? All three? A, B, C? Is there a seconder for that motion? On the phone, is there a seconder for that motion?
Clarification, Madam Mayor. How would we do A, B, and C?
So, Counselor Gardner's motion is that we pass all three recommendations. Is there a second?
So, we're not looking to approve?
Yeah, we're looking to follow the recommendations as presented, A, B, C, but there needs to be a seconder for that motion.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any seconder? Any other motion? Counselor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would support A and B, and C, I would remove that and say that it'd be reviewed at the end of August.
So, what is your motion, Counselor Grant, so that we're clear?
The current parking program would be reviewed at the end of August.
Okay, so your motion is A, as-is?
As-is. B, as-is, and C, as a review at that time, at the end of August.
So, rather than continue the city's current parking program, review?
Right.
Is there a seconder for that motion? On the phone?
Yes, I'll second it.
Counselor Bergeron, you're seconding?
Yes.
Okay, debate. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think these items are so different, I wish we would deal with them separately. So, I'll say I support number one. B, I don't support because, it seems to me from what I read in the report, because our system isn't a homogeneous system, we've got meters, and then we've got pay-by, you know, display, plate display, that it's pretty onerous for our bylaw parking people to be able to manage the one-hour complimentary parking. Because how do you do that in a meter? You know, you go somewhere for an hour, and then you come back at that hour, and then you pay for your parking? I mean, anybody who needs two hours downtown isn't building in a trip to your meter at the one-hour mark. So, whereas it would work for pay-for-display, it doesn't really work with the meters. So, I think that we should simply continue our present practice and change the date, June 22nd, to August 30th. Frankly, I think the whole thing is optimistic because we've been warned that it's possible we'll be facing a second wave in the fall. And so, I think we're in a state of flux, and to build in a relatively complicated system for such a short period of time, which is going to take a lot of time and manipulation of the system by our parking people, I think it's probably not worth the effort, and we should just have a great summer with a continuation of the current practice downtown. But it's so important that we limit the parking, the free parking, to two hours, because people will park all day long, because there's so many apartments downtown without parking. And if we let the system be open to anybody parking, we would have people parking all day long, because I know I used to live on York Street, and it wasn't just in front of the villa. We'd have people who worked downtown parking on York Street all day long. So, I think we should limit it to two hours, but not try to have one-hour complimentary and then pay for the second hour, because it's probably more complicated than it's worth.
So, if this motion is defeated, you can...
Then I can say all that. Okay.
You can come back with, you could come back with a different motion.
I reject the motion. I just think it's too hard to work.
Further discussion? Counselor Hollingsworth, the smartest counselor.
Bravest. I'm not going to support, I am, I don't like the idea, Your Worship, of kind of patching things together in times of duress. Because what happens is you kind of put things in place in an attempt to sort of, you know, put the fingers in the holes in the dam, and then it kind of stays in place for eternity. I only need to say the word "income tax," and everybody knows exactly what I'm talking about. It was supposed to be kind of a World War sort of measure, and I'm paying it long after the, 76 years after D-Day, and we're still paying. So, my point is that I don't have an issue with reviewing our parking program, but I think it needs to be done just by itself. We're just going to review the parking program and decide what we want to do, not because of COVID-19, just because maybe it's something we need to do. Currently, correct me if I'm wrong, and whether it's the C A O or Mr. Buallo, we're not charging for parking now downtown, right, in the BIAs? We don't charge parking?
Mr. Buallo?
That's correct. We're not charging for parking anywhere in the community.
Have we advertised that? Are people aware of that?
I believe we recently did that, yes, following the last council meeting.
So, thank you, Mr. Buallo. The only thing, Your Worship, I would see, kind of as a follow-up, is to let people know that currently, because of the circumstances, we're not charging for parking. But if we're going to talk about our parking program or parking policy, I think that needs to be done as a separate kind of report, aside from COVID. The BIAs have talked about, you know, free parking downtown for a long time. Maybe that has merit, or maybe we have to review it, but I don't like the idea of kind of doing it under duress, because I don't know if we're always, when you rush into things, or try to patch something together, the fear is that you won't do it properly. So, regardless of any, I won't support any of these current recommendations, just because I feel like we're trying to kind of patch the dam with duct tape, and I'm not convinced that's the best idea. So, I'm not going to support the motion. Thank you.
Counselor Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't support the motion that's on the table now, but I would be happy to second Counselor McDonald's motion. I am not opposed to parking. I actually think we have a really great parking system in our community. It's very fair, free parking on the weekends, free parking in the evenings. There's not a lot of, you know, larger communities that offer that. So, I think we've always had a very fair parking system. I'm also really curious, and I know this is something that you can't really calculate, but I'd love to know how many people don't come shopping downtown because they have to pay a couple of bucks for parking. But I do know that the business community would really love for us to transition to something that is free, but also keep in mind that parking isn't free. If it was provided at no cost, there is still a cost to parking. There are employees that would still need to ensure that people aren't parking in handicap spaces, people aren't parking illegally. So, we'd still need the same amount of staff, the same amount of maintenance for our parking lots during the winter, even in the summertime. So, there's still a cost to parking. It would just no longer be a user-pay system, right? So, it wouldn't be the person parking. It would be added to our tax base. So, something to think of when we do make a final decision. But I would certainly be in favor of keeping it, as-is, free until we review potentially, you know, September 1st. And if things on the COVID front have lightened up, and we are sort of going back to a somewhat business-as-normal, I think then we could have a conversation about, do we bring in one hour of complimentary parking, followed by paid parking, et cetera. But I would be happy to support Counselor McDonald's motion to keep parking at no cost to the user until the end of the summer. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I like Counselor Hollingsworth's idea of a full parking review that's done, as he said, when we're not under duress. I think that's the best way to get up, come up with some good solutions. I'm sure all of us have gotten emails and had phone calls or personal conversations with some businesses in the BIAs. They're looking for something new. I mean, I'm sure they would love it to be free, but I think they also understand that that probably can't be the case as a long-term solution. What I would like to know, though, is, is the parking bylaw division the only division that is self-funded, so it doesn't really cost the taxpayer any money, because it's, like, is there any other division in bylaw that is completely recovered in fees?
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Both the water division and the wastewater division are self-financing as well. And we always support services where there's a user-fee revenue to recover some of those costs, and that not everything goes to the tax base.
Thank you. I asked that question because it was asked of me. I just wanted that out there. So, I'm not going to support this motion as it is. I would almost be happier just to have it free until August 31st and then re-engage at that time, because I've heard a lot of complaints about the new meter systems, and those new meter systems are quite popular in larger centers, and it's expected you're going to have to walk half a block to go pay for your parking. But I've talked to a couple of businesses that have seen a significant drop in their business, because people will not, they'll get out, look down there, if it's raining, or maybe they have some mobility issues, and then they'll walk in half a block or a full block to go get their ticket, and then come back to the car, and then go back to their store. So, you know, I'd even be in favor of going back to the actual old meters, as old-fashioned as that sounds. I think that would probably help some of the businesses that really took a hit when we went up with these new meters. I know that somebody from bylaw went down to listen to concerns and watched the traffic and saw the issues. So, it's known. So, I believe that Counselor Hollingsworth's idea of a parking review is something we should really, really look at doing, so that we can get it right, and that people can have their say, and maybe somebody's got their better idea. But I would like to go to the public with it. So, I won't support this motion as it is, but if somebody was to make a motion just to save us all the headaches of all the one-hour free, and then you pay, and all that stuff, let's just make it free till August 31st, and then look at it then. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor DePell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I won't support the motion that's on hand, but I certainly would support a motion for free parking, complimentary parking until August 31st, until we have time to review it again at all city spaces.
Thank you. Counselor Bergeron?
Yes, thank you. I seconded this motion to open debate. I wasn't really sure how council was feeling about this. So, I do have a question, I think for the clerks, maybe for the C A O, about I to B, which is first-hour complimentary parking at all metered curbside, pay-by-plate. That doesn't explicitly say how it's going to be enforced. Is that correct? There are still options on how that could be enforced?
Madam C A O?
Would redirect that to Mr. Buallo?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The enforcement would actually be fairly simple, of course, at the pay-by-plate machines, because we can program those machines to allow for the first hour to be free. because we can program those machines to allow for the first hour to be free. It is more challenging at the meters, however, there are fewer of those spaces than there are now at pay-by-plate. But really, in fairness, that was why they were included as well as...although the enforcement is more challenging, I think it's really a matter of fairness largely for Le Village to allow for a similar program to be put in place there, so.
Counsel Bergeron?
Yeah, just a follow-up. So my question is specific to pay-by-plate. Do we have to...if this motion is approved, does item B specifically state that you have to go to the pay-by-plate machine for that first free hour? Is that a variable given this motion?
Mr. Bualow?
Thank you. It was our thinking that, yes, you would have to go to the machine.
Counsel Bergeron?
Okay. Well, our thinking of versus it is. It's clear that the pay-by-plate machines are not to the benefit of the downtown business owners. That's...you know, we have the data on that prior to the pandemic. We absolutely do need to have a review of downtown parking. At the end of the day, if the enforcement of this is that it must be people go to pay-by-plate for the first hour...sorry, my computer just logged off here. Then I won't support the motion. I would prefer free parking that is enforced than making people go to the pay-by-plate parking system because it is proven from our downtown businesses to be detrimental to their success. And right now, we need to be doing everything. This is all about COVID-19 recovery. We need to be doing everything we can this summer to make sure people go downtown.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Those who haven't spoken? I'll just speak before I turn to the mover to wrap up. I will not be supporting the motion, although I will say this, parking is not free. It never is. It's...we decide who is going to pay that. Is it the person who goes downtown? Is it the resident of Cornwall? We have to make that call. So I agree with Counsel Bergeron that people need to be downtown and we need to be supporting that. I also agree with Counsel Hollingsworth that we need a larger review. We need parking to be free during these COVID times, though. I agreed with that at the last meeting and we made that clear and we have since that time made it clearer to our residents. And so I'm glad to see that there is a clearer understanding for residents. But I will not support the motion as-is and look forward to seeing what comes forward after this, if it is defeated. Counsel Grant?
Well, if I would guess the outcome of this motion, it would probably be that it's not going to go through. But my intent of putting in that review, the free parking at the end of August, is basically Counsel Bergeron and I are not together, but we are individually looking at the potential of free parking in this community. And so that's why I wanted to put that in, the free parking, review the free parking at the end of August, so we could start the discussion about free parking in our community. I believe it's...we talked about the downtown BIA and Le Village. How can we entice people to go and shop in those areas because those areas are hurting? And this was one of the ways of looking at is free parking. It's helped Brockville from my understanding and their discussions with them, and I think that's why I want to talk about the review at the end of August. So we wouldn't automatically go back into what status quo, we would start talking about our parking program. So maybe I didn't explain my intent well enough at the start, but that was the intent behind it.
Thank you. All in favor? On the phone? On the phone?
Against.
It's defeated. Is there another motion that counselors want to make around the issue of parking? Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move that we continue the current status quo, which is complimentary parking all the time until...I won't say August 31st because I think if we meet early in August and then in September, we only have one meeting in August, so I'll say until...let's use the date, the first meeting in September and we can make a decision then, although I think depending on what the COVID news is, the decision might be out of our hands anyway. But let's at least take that timeframe, the entire summer. But before I make that motion, if I could ask a question of Mr. Bualow, I would like to.
Go ahead.
I think the biggest innovation in parking in Cornwall in years was the 15-minute quick turnover parking, which is...has always been free for the last few years. Merchants love it. Now, with our current situation where we're not ticketing people, are we having people tie up very limited parking spaces for a whole day at a time? Like, are we getting complaints about that?
Mr. Bualow?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Our experience, because our bylaw people have had a chance over the last couple of weeks to have a look and see what's happening in the parking spaces. And certainly, in fact, we have evidence to show that there are some people who are parking in the complimentary parking all day, the same vehicles all day, all week. So there's no doubt that that is happening. And I think really, and to the point you made earlier, there...what communities are doing is they are providing complimentary parking for periods of time. So if you look at the examples that are shown in the report, whether it's Brockville or Kingston or others, nobody is giving complimentary parking for the whole day. We have this situation in Cornwall right now because, you know, A, the stores weren't open and so it was...we didn't feel it was fair to have people pay. And of course, we're in this situation. But the fact of the matter is, parking...free parking all day is an amount of about $50,000 a year in revenue for the city, which is approximately a 1% levy to the taxpayer. So that is why this is structured the way it is. It's to allow for turnover, which is the main goal of the BIAs, to allow turnover so that one hour allows that turnover. It's similar to what we're seeing in some other communities as well. But that's the basis for what we're recommending.
So if I can have a follow-up question then? So, Mr. Bualow, in your opinion, from what you've heard from the bylaw people, if we were to modify our complimentary parking and say one hour complimentary parking, or would two be more advantageous, do you think?
There is no difference in what needs to be programmed in the machine, whether it's one hour or two hours. I think certainly putting a time limit on it is beneficial. It creates that turnover that everybody's looking for. So...
I agree, so...because you do get people tying up a spot all day long and they're not shopping and they're not visiting businesses, they're just using the free parking. So I'll change my motion that we continue to offer complimentary parking, but that be limited to two hours maximum.
So let's get some clarity on your motion. Clarity on your motion, please.
So...did you say clarity?
Yes.
Can you...that we continue to offer complimentary parking in downtown Cornwall at all our metered and paid display spots with a two-hour limit?
Is there a second for that motion? Counsel Ebert? Debate? Counsel Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a really good direction. It would continue to provide no-cost parking until the end of the summer, but encourage turnover so that folks can come in and use the parking right down on our main streets. Maybe one thing as part of the motion, Counsel McDonald mentioned, our downtown parking. I think it's to continue all parking across the city, as far as I'm aware. We're not charging parking anywhere, so it would be to continue that, no parking cost, but to provide a fine if someone is there longer than two hours. And I know that our parking fines are quite affordable, but would possibly encourage people to move along and allow that parking spot for somebody else.
Further discussion? Counsel McIntosh?
The monthly passes, are we giving refunds for the people who bought monthly passes or for the...I imagine they would buy them for more than a month, the yearly passes? Do we have that?
Mr. Bualow?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I've not...many of those passes are with larger organizations. We've not received any...I'm not sure if they're looking forward to the decision of council before they make a request, but we've not heard anything, or at least it's not reached me, that they have requested compensation.
The two-hour free parking and you get a ticket. I understand how the chalking system works, but there are so many ways to beat that. You know, any law student could beat that one. Just show up, move your car to the next meter and go back home. I think it'd be extremely hard to enforce, you know, having your enforcement guys do the two-hour deal. And I imagine they would use a chalking system. They would have to take down, log the license plate, make up the car, the whole bit.
Mr. Bualow?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It actually isn't a chalking system, but it is a system that is used quite often whenever fines are issued. It's fairly well-defended, but that's not to say that somebody couldn't do something to alter their positioning, right? So...
Not to get technical on this, but is it two-hour parking for that spot or two-hour parking...I'm talking about a parking lot. Is the two-hour free parking for that spot or the entire lot?
It's intended to be two hours for...per vehicle, per day.
Any further discussion? On the phone?
Madam Mayor?
Counsel Bergeron?
Can you reread the motion, please?
Of course. Madam Clerk?
So this motion is to provide two-hour complimentary parking at all metered curbside and pay-by-plate parking space until September 14th.
And my question then would be, how will this be enforced? And I think that was...
You'll need to speak louder, Counsel Bergeron. Counsel Bergeron, louder, please.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
The question is, how will this be enforced outside of the downtown?
Mr. Bualow? How do you enforce outside of the downtown? Was that the question?
Yes.
Yeah.
So basically, the enforcement is done, of course, with the officers visiting the vehicle, recording the STEM locations on the wheel, on the wheels, and returning following the two-hour period.
Counsel Bergeron?
But that is not how it would be enforced downtown, where there are pay-by-plate meters.
Yeah, so that at any pay-by-plate machine, the two...the first two hours would be complimentary and would, of course, be much easier to enforce. There are meters that are not in Le Village. We do have some meters, although, you know, I think we have to admit that the enforcement on those is more challenging. I do want to make a comment that there was a bit of discussion about getting...putting more meters in place. I will say that we often would get complaints about meters with respect to snow, the challenges that people have in accessing those meters. So we're not experiencing that these days, but certainly throughout the winter, we hear complaints about not being able to access the meters at a fairly frequent basis, so. I also want to mention, by the way, that the machines will allow for the app, the parking app, to be effective and much more convenient to the user who can use an app. So I just wanted to make that point as well.
Counsel Bergeron?
Thank you. I keep hearing ease of enforcement, but ultimately, the goal of this report and these motions, I think, is what will help our businesses the most. And I think this motion is somewhere in between. I'm aware that parking is not free, regardless of whether we give it as free or not, but, you know, 53% of businesses in the DBIA have said that these machines are a problem, they're detrimental to their success, and we need to be doing everything we can. I'm going...I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I think enforcement is going to be really critical to what's going on here. The businesses don't just want free parking, they want it enforced so that there is turnover and ultimately, I saw that in the report.
Thank you. Counsel DePell?
I'm okay, Madam Mayor. I will support the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Bennett?
What I like about this motion is it's a compromise, and I do like compromises. So I understand that parking is not free, and I also understand that free parking does create that person that seems to think that that spot is now theirs for the whole day, possibly for the whole week. So I think this is a great compromise that should fix that problem somewhat and get the turnover because I would think downtown businesses would also agree that somebody parking in their parking space for eight hours is not doing anything for their business either. So this is a good compromise and I will support it.
Any further discussion? I'll just comment that I will be supporting it. It is a compromise. I look forward, though, to the fuller discussion in September. Counsel McDonald, did you want to wrap up?
No, that's fine, I'm ready to vote, Madam Mayor.
All in favor? On the phones?
In favor.
Counsel Bergeron?
In favor.
Carried. Oh, I should say against, just in case. Okay, carried. Thank you.
Home-based businesses, COVID-19, with a recommendation that counsel receive this report and that counsel maintain its current home occupation standards.
Counsel McDonald? Move that recommendation? Okay. Is there a second? Counsel Hollingsworth? Debate? Counsel Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be happy to support this motion with potentially an amendment. I'm happy with what we have, but what I have noticed is that in most other communities, they allow a non-resident employee in these home businesses. We do not. But as far as I can see, almost every other municipality does allow a non-resident employee within that business. So if there was the desire to make that, I don't think that's...I don't know if that's a friendly amendment or if I can make the amendment, I'd be happy to support everything else as-is.
I'm going to turn to the CAO here, who may want to...turn it to Mark Bualow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I would refer it to Mark for comments.
There may be zoning issues, Mr. Bualow?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, and so that paragraph that follows within the recommendations is exactly the point of anything that needs to be changed, needs to go through a proper zoning amendment. As counsel is aware, we're currently reviewing all of our zoning bylaw, and I would agree as well that in reviewing some of the... And I would agree as well that in reviewing some of the, some of the information that was provided for other communities, that was the one item that stands out is with respect to employee, non-resident employees. So that is something that we would have a better look at and bring back to council.
If I, if I just may follow up, my notes did indicate to ask for this to be reviewed during the comprehensive bylaw. I just sort of forgot. So I think, yes, that would be the good time to do it. I'm happy to vote with, on this motion as is.
Okay, further debate? Because we have a mover and a seconder, so.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Bergeron?
I support the motion to receive. It's an example to me of something we should be handing off to the Economic Recovery Task Force. The point of these motions was to be creative and flexible and have information ready to help anybody, you know, during the recovery period, which is, is just getting started right now. So I, I don't know why we would have asked the BIAs for their opinion, that, that's, of course, they don't support home-based businesses, you know. I read the report, it isn't overly creative, but that, that can be difficult, and I get it, when, when we ask for reports. So I would love to see this as one of the option, or one of the items that moves to the Economic Recovery Task Force, so that it can be a little more flexible, a little more, you have the information. And so I'll, I'll leave it there. I will support receiving the report.
Councilor DePell?
I'm good, Madam Mayor. I will support receiving the report.
Any further discussion? Councilor McIntosh?
Of course, when we talk about people moving to home-based services, it means there's less, fewer people using commercial establishments, and that's a fact. And Professor Mike Moffett, not the goalie from the Bruins days, anyway, he's an economics professor at Western, he's really studied this big time. And he's patterned movement towards home-based remote workers or people working in other homes. And I know the business that I'm partners in, of the 35 people who are in that business, about 80% of them have moved into their homes, like, because it's a one or two-person operation. So there's a trend there to move into homes that's cheaper. You're at home, you can set your own hours and whatnot. But it's a growing trend, and if you're a commercial property owner, you should be not concerned, but taking a look at it, because there are gonna be a lot, in the next 10 years, gonna be a lot more commercial spaces available, vacant.
Councilor Gardner?
I have a few questions. I worry about, we talked about Cornwall in the report, and other businesses like, home business like Prescott, Rockville, Guelph, they all have permits, but in our report, it doesn't say that Cornwall is going to need or needs a permit for a home business. And the permit would tell us what the business is and how we control it. I mean, there has to be some kind of control with home businesses. The other thing is, is the more we move towards home-based business, how is that going to affect the business that are paying taxes in the city? How are we going to deal with that? The public traffic to downtown businesses, they'll lose business there. So I really, I really have a question, and I need to have a lot more answers of how we're gonna control this. It, you cannot allow people just to open businesses without knowing what the heck they're doing. And, and, I mean, I'm, I'm not being democratic here, but we look, we need to look at the tax structure. Our businesses downtown, or anywhere else in the city, are paying taxes. Will the home businesses pay taxes the same way, or is it a freebie? I mean, I need answers. I'd like to have some answers to that.
Well, I, I don't know if you're gonna get all answers to all those questions, but I'm gonna turn to Mr. Boalow to see if he wants to comment.
Through you, Madam Mayor. While it doesn't clearly indicate that we require permits, certainly we, if permits are required, because they don't always, they're not always required. So if you're just a consultant who's going to be working from home, depending on your setup, you may just be able to work the way you have it. However, oftentimes, improvements are necessary, changes are necessary, and of course, in those situations, permits are definitely required. Some businesses require a license, some don't. But certainly where they are required, whether it's a license required or a permit is required, we're no different than any other place in Ontario, absolutely. In fact, we don't even regulate what, you know, we're not different than anywhere else in Ontario for those two matters. With respect to taxes, I think it's, it's, it's two issues. One is, to the point that was made by Councilor McIntosh, which is that there could be a growing change of people working from home, and so therefore, a higher vacancy in commercial space. Some people think, though, that they will get away from paying taxes, but in fact, the assessment office will, and we try to tell people this, that if, you know, there could be situations where you're going to be taxed higher from your home, depending on how you're set up. So that's important to remember as well. And, and, you know, there are so many other things that, that are not detailed in the report, but, you know, working from home, are you, if you're working for a company, is the company paying for your furniture? Is it, are, are you working in ergonomically sound setting? Are you insured at home, or are you not insured at home? There are a lot of details that, and, and I'm not trying to discourage a working-from-home situation, but there are a lot, there's a lot more to it than I'm just gonna start working from home.
Thank you for that answer. I still have some questions about it. When I hear people like working for Amazon that aren't paying taxes, that really bothers me. Yeah, they pay on the, on the, on the property, but they don't pay on the sales like a normal store does. That, that's a problem. And, and I know that I brought this up with Amazon before, when they were looking for home-based employees. And I like the idea, I think it's a great idea. However, we need to have some kind of control, and that's what I'm looking for, and thank you. Thanks for your answer.
Any further discussion? I will be supporting the motion. I appreciate Councilor Bergeron's comments about the fact that it might be a topic of discussion for a recovery task force. That is coming, folks. I've received a feedback from lots of community members and lots of different organizations, so stay tuned. All in favor? Against? On the phones?
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Carried.
Update on a Cornwall Small Business Emergency Support Loan, with a recommendation that council receive this report and authorize the extension of the program to accommodate up to 115 participants.
Madam CIO? Do you want to comment on that?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. So following our last council meeting, we committed to bringing back a report to council as an update to the Small Business Emergency Support Loan. In total, per the report, 115 applications, allowing that deadline to be extended to the Friday of the week following the last council meeting. There are still, I believe, a couple of applications where additional information might be required, but staff have reviewed a majority of them. Many of them have been funded already. If there are any questions, I'm sure that the CFO or Mr. Boalow would be able to answer any of council's questions.
Councilor McIntosh?
I don't know if you can tell me this at this point, but what types of business are they, across the spectrum, or is there like restaurants and more restaurants than other businesses or whatnot?
Mr. Boalow?
Perhaps Tracy Bailey could speak a little bit more intimately on this, because she reviewed all of the applications with Dana from our office. The general description is given in, on page 62, on, on the types of businesses, in the second last paragraph. I'm not sure if Tracy would like to be more specific on that.
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you. I guess we received many applications across many different industries or business sectors, and we listed the business sectors on page 62, as Mr. Boalow noted. Many from restaurant, retail, especially personal care services, and we did have a few from contractor services, such as painting, landscaping. So it was a broad range. It's very good.
Councilor Mac?
At some point, will there be a list made public, I mean, it's public funds?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. A report will come back to council after we've reviewed all of the applications and the contracts have been signed. And that will provide a list of the businesses that the program supported.
Of course, when you operate a program like this, you're gonna have some default. What are your expectations, like 5%, 10%?
Through you, Madam Mayor. What we'll do is, we will, normally we'll set up approximately 10%. We may decide on a little bit more for this particular program. But at the end of each year, we'll take a look at the businesses that owe the $4,000 back to the city, and we'll adjust that accordingly with our auditor.
I think I should know the answer to this, but this is, programs for landlords and tenants, or tenants only, or landlords only?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it was for both. It was for the small business, the activity that was going on. So it could have been a, a property owner, or it could have been a tenant.
Not to belabor this, but if it's, if it's a property owner, we had a better chance of recovering money if it's a default, because we could put a lien on the taxes, is that right?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. If a property, if it's a property owner, we could put a lien on, on the property and collect it through, through a tax.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll need a mover.
Madam Mayor, if I may just ask a question?
Yes, Councilor DePell? Go ahead.
I'm not sure if there's an answer tonight. I just, I have heard back from three different participants in the program. They were very grateful for the help, but they asked me the question, and I didn't have the answer. They asked me the question as to why we wouldn't have mailed everything to them, rather than have them pick up in the foyer at the complex, that it was difficult for some of them to go and accept the help, like, it was sort of like a, a public display. So I'm just wondering, I, I realize that we need to have stuff signed, but could we not have done that by either scanning or mailing, and we don't release the money until those documents are received?
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. There was a requirement to sign a contract for those funds, and if there was a business that would have preferred to do that by email, we could have done that. But what we thought, the easiest way to coordinate it and to get the money in the hands of the applicants, the quickest, was to set up, I think it was over a two-day period, and probably over 85% of those funds have already been released.
Right, and I understand that the documents need to be signed, but I, the person, I will check back with them. The business that I spoke with, there was not an offer to have it. When asked, could we scan it or email it? They were told no, they had to come in person. So I'm just asking the question, thank you.
Okay. It's, it's okay to follow up on that. Councilor DePell?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's perfectly legitimate to follow up on that. Councilor Bergeron?
No, I'm good. I fully support this. I support this program from day one, and I think it's a good example of us being flexible. At the last meeting, there was some debate as to whether this needed to be debated at the next council meeting, but I'm glad we passed it, because there are businesses that are, have applied and that need the money, and I'm, I'm happy to do it. I look forward to, at budget time, going through how we're going to deal with this recovery.
Any further discussion? So I need a mover and a seconder, Councilor Ebert and Councilor Bennett. Before I call the vote, I just want to say that this program is quite remarkable and sent a strong message to small businesses. And many other municipalities in eastern Ontario took note of the way that we did that. I want to commend our staff, CFO in particular, and Ms. Dana McLean, for turning that around as quickly as they did. And I'm proud to say we're doing this. When I look at that list, in, in response to Councilor Mac's question, it's the businesses that were the hardest hit that were applicants. And so that makes perfect sense. A lot of businesses and services that we miss. We miss you, you miss us. So, all in favor? Against? Carried.
In favor.
Thank you.
In favor.
Residential rental licensing, with a recommendation that council receive this report regarding residential licensing and approve the public consultation plan.
So I think I'll turn to Madam CIO to introduce this matter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is an item that has been on our unfinished business listing for a couple of years now. Chief Wazin has done a tremendous amount of work in this area and has been engaged with several, several interested groups. The one area that we have not actively engaged with is the tenants, or the people that live in, in the properties that we're discussing. I think that we would also welcome any further feedback from council with respect to potential direction that they would like to see us take with this. We do have a plan to do further public consultation. We think that that might still be a few months out, though, so we want to make sure that if we're trying to reach out to the residents or the people living in, in these rental units, I think we want to try and make sure that we have an ability to be successful in that surveying and acquiring their feedback. So that might take, you know, typically in the past, we've tried to do open houses, online surveys, mail-in surveys. So we would want to try and, and do something similar in this, in this instance. Chief Wazin is here tonight, as well as Mrs. Ferguson, so if there are questions, I might actually hand it over to Chief Wazin briefly to allow him to express some of his comments. He really has been the drafter of the report this evening.
Chief Wazin? No, you're not on.
Here we go. Essentially, the report is, and thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor, essentially the report is a culmination of a lot of work that was done through the Property Standards Advisory Group, pretty much at the end of their term and at the beginning of this council's term. And what we wanted to do was, was, was kind of wrap that into a report to rejuvenate it a little bit, because a lot of that information is currently sitting in minutes from those meetings and not necessarily currently available to you, in a sense. And, you know, we've, we've seen that there, there was a lot of work, there was a lot of consultation done through that committee, but perhaps in looking at what other municipalities have done in Ontario, and there's, there's a number of them now, there's, there's lessons that have been learned by now from these municipalities. And one of the areas that municipalities struggled with was finding exactly, you know, getting an exact handle on the pulse of their community. And reaching out to the tenants is a complicated one, because in some cases, some may not want to speak out, you know, by fear of reprisals from, from some landlords. want to speak out, you know, by fear of reprisals from some landlords. And I think, at this point, what we're presenting is that the next step here should really be a comprehensive review of this file in getting this data from the community, and not just the tenants. We should go back to the community groups that represent tenants and that deal with issues such as, you know, the residences and the safety issues that come with that itself. One of the biggest challenges is the fact that the municipality does not currently have much information on how many rental apartments are out there and their status. Municipalities such as ours aren't also resourced appropriately to be able to get out there, send an army of people out, and start applying codes to all of the apartments that exist in your municipality. Number one, you may not know they actually exist. It's hard to tell sometimes. And number two, there's just so many of them. And what we've found through our work in the fire service, in the fire department, is we're above, way above, the provincial average in terms of the amount of rental apartments that exist. And we know that through census information, which is not necessarily completely accurate itself either, which is, again, speaks to the need perhaps of additional data. There's also the issue of Airbnb. So many municipalities have chosen to take that approach first in terms of the short-term rental buildings or apartments which are, that fall under the Airbnb aspect. So that's a component of that as well. And it really, and that really speaks to how the municipality wants to approach this, and we require data in order to be able to do that appropriately. On top of that, I would note that many municipalities have been doing this, and they've been doing it differently, right? Some of them start from an Airbnb issue that they want to address. Some others want to look at residences related to universities or colleges as well, as a first, as a first thought. I think the city of Cornwall has yet to identify where it should start in terms of applying a program such as this, and, again, further data is required. So the intent of this report tonight is simply, you know, to gain perspective from council whether or not we want to move forward on gaining more data in order to set a more comprehensive plan on the file.
Thank you. Counsel, Counselor McDonald, do you want to make a motion?
I certainly would. I'd be honored to make this motion, Madam Mayor, that we do as is recommended, that we begin this consultation process, get the wheels in motion. This work has been a long time coming, and I thank the chief for mentioning the work of the CPEG Committee. Some of us sit there, and we know what he's talking about, but we are very grateful to the chief for the leadership he's shown on this file and for the support that the fire service has given this group of individuals who sit around a table and see a need, and the leadership that the fire service brings to coming up with a solution and a way forward. So, big thanks. So, it's shocking when you consider how many--
So you're making the motion? Let me just see, that there's a seconder?
Yeah, the motion as reads here, that we initiate this consultation process.
Counselor Eber makes seconds the motion.
Good, so go ahead. Okay, well, touching on what Mrs. Adams said, she said she was looking for direction as well. I just hope that, if you look at page eighty, with some of the questions that will be in the survey, or the various means that people will be surveyed, for example, with the mail-in prepaid envelopes included, I hope that the survey will include an opportunity for the responder to designate whether or not they're a renter or a landlord, because it's pretty shocking when you think that we don't have a tenant association when you consider how many tenants we have. And this, you know, tenancy and landlordship, that's a relationship, and we can't just have one party represented at the table where we're doing our consultation. So I hope the online survey too will have an opportunity for people to identify themselves and into which category they fall. And then a question of Mr. Balo, possibly through you, Madam Mayor, would a landlord, do the landlords whose existence we know of, do they pay a business tax on their operation?
Mr. Balo?
I don't, I actually don't know the answer to that. I don't believe they do, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Chief Wazin knows.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll kick it to him. Chief Wazin?
Through you, Madam Mayor, so no, they don't. And the intent here is, essentially, you have a group, a significant group who operate a business who do not pay for a business permit.
Right. So, speaking of businesses from home, when, you know, we're opening up this whole field of working from home and talking about business taxes and that sort of thing, certainly tenancy should be included, I think, and that should be caught up in that discussion. So I think that's all I wanted to say, but this is so good that this is finally on the table.
Thank you. I have Counselor Grant and then Counselor McIntosh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to see the public consultation report for the plan that's here. I know I've been approached by numerous landlords who have expressed concerns about the potential costs, and that cost then being passed on to the tenants, et cetera, and then becomes an affordability issue. So I'm happy to see the public consultation, and that I tell the landlords, get out and explain your situation, what's happening. So if you don't get out there and talk, we don't know. So, but I'm also glad to hear that there's going to be a lot of the tenants there. I know, as Counselor McDonald said, through CPEG, we've seen some horror stories, and there are some unfortunate people living in unfortunate situations. And so I hope this rectifies that, but the business, the consultation plan, I think, is vital to this, to be successful. So, good plan.
Thank you. Counselor McIntosh and then Counselor Eber.
I was surprised to read that we have a higher rental base than cities our size or per capita. I'm just wondering why this occurs. Is it because our household income's lower and people maybe can't afford to buy homes? I'm just thinking out loud here.
I'll let Chief Wazin speculate on that.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Speculate is a good word. There's probably a number of different reasons. Simply geography could be part of the reason, because what we've seen is we interact with a number of landlords that don't necessarily live in the area either. So it's easy, it's easy for someone from Ottawa, for example, to come and buy a building, rent it out, and, you know, the market here in terms of the value and cost of the buildings certainly make that easier than buying in downtown Ottawa. So there's probably a number of reasons. Again, we would probably have a much better sense of why that is if we had more data supporting all of this, in fact.
On the subject of absentee landlords, I think a landlord who owned a couple apartment buildings and lived in town here would probably be more interested in taking care of their property than somebody from Montreal who owns forty-five units. Is that a problem? Absentee landlord who turns everything over to a property manager?
Chief Wazin?
Again, through you, Madam Mayor, it's a problem. We've seen it. I mean, we've dealt with, we've dealt with a number of landlords and maintenance issues on their buildings. And this is, I'm speaking on behalf of the fire service here. I'm sure, I'm sure the building department and the property standards group would have their own list of examples. But we've also seen some really good landlords that just don't happen to live in the area. So I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's necessarily linked solely to that, but it certainly exists.
And you say seventy-six percent of fires in Cornwall occur in residential-type buildings, which isn't a surprise, but where are the majority of these fires?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Interestingly enough, I mean, there is a slight majority of structure fires that occur in the east end of the city, but surprisingly enough, not as much as one would think. We've tabulated and actually plotted all of our calls. We do that regularly for the last three years, and we find, I think, I'm going to go off the top of my head here, but if we look at the amount of structure fires in a three-year period, you know, there'd be something around ten percent more in the east end of the city. But it's surprisingly not all in the same area.
Yeah, it does surprise me. Well, thank you.
Counselor--
Another question.
Oh, go ahead.
Have we got any idea how many illegal basement apartments exist in Cornwall? There's no way of tracking that?
Chief Wazin?
And I'm not talking about the son or daughter comes home and lives in your basement. I'm talking about somebody renting out the basement to, somebody we don't even, you don't even know exists. So if there was a fire in that building, you wouldn't know there was a family living downstairs.
Absolutely. This is an issue that we encounter often. We'll encounter that issue accidentally when we go to a home for a call of some sort. And we also do, a great number of our inspections are complaint-based. So tenants have some issues, they call us, we'll go in, they hope that we'll be able to resolve their issues. Often, we find some very, very, you know, some decrepit illegal basement apartments that we, you know, we work very well with the other departments in the city, and we report those and we address those. And sadly, part of the problem is we really don't have a sense of how many of those exist, right? When we find one, we address it, but how many exist, we don't know. The data doesn't exist. If there was a requirement for landlords to sign up, and this is not even, not even talking about cost or money at this point, if there's a requirement for landlords to sign up, and there was some sort of a watchdog in terms of if a tenant didn't feel that their landlord was official, they could check with the city to see if their apartment was actually legal and, you know, permitted under the licensing program, we'd have a much better sense of that.
I'll just comment, somebody who lives in the neighborhood, neighboring municipality was telling me it was somebody that rented out their garage to somebody who was on a disability pension, and the way they got caught, they were running an extension cord from the house into the garage so the person would have heat. So there's some pretty sad cases out there.
Counselor Eber and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I ask my question, just to speculate a little bit more on why we have so many rental units, the city unfortunately has a very high level of residents living below the poverty line. And although sometimes purchasing a home becomes more affordable in the long run than renting, because we have some higher rent costs, a lot of these lower-income families don't have the credit or ability to purchase a home. Even if they are working or not working, they end up in a situation where they have no choice but to rent. So I would speculate as well that our high level of poverty certainly is tied to the high level of units. My question, through you, Madam Mayor, so there's a fee, obviously, to license. How often will that fee be collected? Is it a one-time thing, or is it an annual thing?
Through you, Madam Mayor, we've looked at many different cities' approach to this, and it's all over the map essentially. So I guess the short answer is whatever the will of council is. We've also, we've also discussed internally that with the advent of, you know, online tools and apps and systems, you know, we could develop a system where perhaps the landlord could auto-register their apartments without significant cost in terms of, you know, the cost for service or fee for service, or, you know, just the recovery aspect of this. So there's ways, there's ways around that. I would also add that in my many discussions with the SDNG in Cornwall Landlords Association, clearly, I think I've outlined their feelings in here, I still think, you know, after a little bit more work here, there's ways to figure out a fair and equitable approach in terms of the cost there with them and how they represent the landlords. Clearly, they represent a number of landlords, and I'll go out there and speculate, most of them are good landlords. The problem, they're the ones that don't want to sign up to an association, don't want to follow the rules, and we have to find a way to be able to address that without penalizing the good and reputable fair ones. I would also add to your comment, Counselor, that based on the CMHC, you know, the recent changes to the rules, buying a house is going to be that much more difficult. So this problem isn't going away. In fact, it's going to get worse.
Great, thank you. So I guess to follow up on that, from what I can see, the fee that is suggested here would be fifty dollars if your unit is in compliance. Of course, that goes up if you're not in compliance. So I feel like landlords are afraid to have to pay the high fee because they're likely not in compliance. But a fifty-dollar fee, potentially one time, to license, so that we know that it exists, I would be supportive of that, of a one-time fee, as long as there is, you know, there's follow-up and updates if needed. I can't understand how that would be such a significant increase to the tenants if it's a one-time fifty-dollar fee. If you're not in compliance for a certain amount of time, of course, that goes up to a hundred or three hundred dollars. That's maybe where there's concern. But if your unit was in compliance, which it should be, it's really not that much of a cost. And we have such poor housing in certain parts of our community, unfortunately, and landlords really must be kept accountable for this, because we have residents that have very low quality of life because of the poor housing stock, because of the poor quality of their homes. And that's often beyond their controls and left to the landlords, these absentee landlords, and they must be treated with the respect any other resident is treated with. Housing is a human right. We have a lot of folks in our region who aren't, our city aren't providing that human right because of the quality of their units. So I would, I'm really happy we're moving forward with this, looking forward to learning more about what the tenants have to say. I think anytime you do any kind of change, you really need to speak to the people that it affects the most. Those are folks with lived experience, folks living in those situations. And so I'm glad there's going to be a great effort to really reach out to those tenants, to hear what they have to say in an anonymous way, of course, and really interested in hearing more from the community overall, but happy to see that this is potentially moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To state the obvious, COVID is having a pretty negative effect, I'm sure, on some landlords trying to collect their rent and some tenants trying to pay their rent. Maybe they aren't able to work right now because of the restrictions in place. Whatever the reason is, they're struggling for their money. So there will be costs associated with this, and so I'm just wondering, is this something we're going to wait till winter or spring to start, to give tenants and landlords an opportunity to recover financially before we start throwing, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but when you're struggling, anything's a lot of money.
I'm going to turn to the CAO for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think with respect to engagement and the survey and the outreach that we want to do, that is likely going to be later in the summer and the fall. So I don't believe, per your comments, I don't believe that we're anticipating anything coming back in the near future while we're still working through COVID either, as far as a fee goes or that component. I think we want to be, I think we want to be understanding of that. I mean, we've been working on this for years at this point in time. You know, a six-month period, twelve-month period, eighteen-month period really is not going to make that big of a difference. What's important is trying to come up with the right, the right program that provides us with the database, the information that we need, and hopefully allows us to improve upon those conditions and areas where we have people that are renting that we're not aware of.
Thank you for that. I agree with you. It's been on the books for quite a while, so what's another year, I guess, right? So I'm glad that will be our approach. Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the phones?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Bergeron?
Thank you. This is a good example of, I think, something where the fire chief and I are in agreement. We had discussed this at strategic planning last year, so I'm glad it's come forward. We're just receiving a report today and approving a public consultation, which I'm always in favor of. I do kind of share, Counselor Bennett, what he was just mentioning there, that, you know, the next thirty days to ninety days may not be the best time to have a public consultation on relationships between landlords and tenants. They're all struggling right now. So I was glad to hear the answer that I just did from the CAO. Would not rush for the public consultation, mainly because I think the data would be somewhat skewed. And as counselors, we want the data to be received in its purest form so that we can make a decision. So I support receiving this report. I support a public consultation. There is no timeline on that public consultation, so I will receive it as it is.
Counselor Dupell?
My questions are answered, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
My questions are answered, Madame Mayor. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Gardner.
Just have a, uh, this, uh, a question for the chief. Uh, some of the landlords I've met with or have spoken to are really concerned that they're being made pay, uh, $50 or whatever is going to be when they're good landlords, clean landlords, clean buildings. How do you answer that?
Chief Wazin.
Uh, through you, Madame Mayor. A great question. Uh, and I can, I can, I can start by saying this. I've interacted with many landlords and, and the association quite a bit. And I can say that, um, we've had a number of really good conversations, even though we, we were somewhat opposed on, on the approach. I could say that I, you know, um, nothing, I get nothing from, uh, I have nothing but respect for, for those folks. And that's a very valid concern, right? Uh, and, um, so the couple of points I'd like to make in answering the question. So first off, the, the draft bylaw appendix, appendix in this report was developed, um, you know, through the work of the PSAC group. So by no means is it $50 or, you know, I think, I think that should be used as a placeholder as we move towards capturing more data here. And the other piece is the reason I say that there's probably some really good opportunity here for further discussion with the landlords in terms of finding an appropriate, uh, I, you know, I'm going to give myself a little bit of opportunity to be here because I don't have to wear this comment for too long. But essentially, uh, I, I see a, I see a place where there could really be some close synergies between the Landlord Association and the city's program in terms of, you know, validating the landlords in, in a way where there could be credit systems associated to landlords who meet all the conditions on time without any issues in terms to reduce the cost to those who, uh, you know, the city doesn't have to send resources to. The, the problem we encounter, and, and I'm going to quote our CAO because she brings this up quite often, is, you know, we send, we send 80% of our resources to 20% of the locations. And we'll go to a specific building after a fire has, has occurred where we find out the week previous or two weeks previously, we had, we had other city services at that location simply because, you know, there are people not on top of their game with regards to the maintenance of that property. So how do we address that without penalizing those who are on top of their game? So this is why I think it's important to get as much data here as possible, to communicate this as much as possible and open the dialogue over a long-term, uh, kind of, uh, discussion here to figure out what that looks like. Municipalities have been doing it now for a while. There's different models out there. Some have taken a, a more heavy-handed than others. Um, let's see and let's have those conversations. Um, you know, I think, I think the opportunity is there. I really do.
And, uh, I like the, uh, the idea that you said you could credit the good landlords. Uh, in parallel to that, when I lived in Alberta, I got pulled over by the cops often enough. And they were giving us certificates if we, uh, didn't go through a red light or stopped or signaled. They would pull over and give you a certificate for good driving. It's a credit for, and something that we could look at in, as a city. Thank you for your answer.
Any further comments?
I want to thank the Fire Chief in particular for the work that he's done, um, on this report, but all of the work, the legwork that went into this. The, um, Property Standards Committee has, former Property Standards Committee had put in lots of work. Yeah, almost years of work, as Counselor Bennett says. And I think this is a way to signal that it's going to move from Chief Wazin's hands into the Planning Department. And, um, you heard the CAO say that we're not going to be, um, you know, on a rigorous timeline here because we are still dealing with COVID-19. I will tell you that I went to meet with the Landlords Association. It's one of the first sort of angry meetings I attended as mayor. I've since had more, but that's fine. It's part of the job. Um, and most of the landlords in the, in this very well-organized association are good landlords. Um, and I met with them in a room at the Best Western and they were, um, very polite. I, people sort of said, you're going to go into that angry room. They weren't angry, they're concerned. And I think we have to work on some trust, uh, with them. I think that there's a perception that this is just going to be some bureaucratic tax grab. Um, and so that's not necessarily what this is about, but that does mean that we have to communicate more effectively around this. We have to do more homework, get more community buy-in, include the tenants, of course, and have a very, um, fulsome discussion. So I think that's part of what this is about. And again, I want to thank, um, Chief Wazin in particular for, uh, working on this report. All in favor? Against?
In favor.
Carried.
Uh, so Madame Mayor, we're going to go back to the consent item, petition for Sunday Transit Service with the recommendation that council refer this online petition to administration for a report. Moved by. Counselor McDonald, seconded by. Is there a point of order?
Point of order, Your Worship. Uh, for the resolution with regards to Counselor Towndale, did, like, I noticed we've kind of passed the resolutions section of our agenda. Like, how, am I missing something or?
No, we're going to debate it.
Do we deal with that under resolution, new business?
I'll turn to the clerk, but we have it here.
I, I've, I know it's here, but we haven't discussed it. And it's a resolution, so I'm just trying to.
Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, my apologies. I did skip over it, Madame Mayor.
So let's continue with this one and then come back to that after. Let's continue with the.
Transit?
Yes. Counselor McDonald, were you going to move?
Thank you, Madame Mayor. I'd like to speak to this just briefly.
So there's a, you're moving?
I'm sorry?
You're making a motion to?
Well, uh, not necessarily. I, I'm asking if something's going to happen. And if so, then I've got no motion to make. I, I appreciate the fact that the clerk accepted this petition even though it was deficient in some of the material we usually ask for. Now, when you say that, um, uh, we should, the recommendation is we should ask for a report, will the mover of the petition, the person who organized it, will they be included in that report? Or is there any communication between, um, the author of the report and that person? Or does it just come to council?
So I'm going to turn to the CAO.
Uh, thank you, Madame Mayor. Typically, when we do get, uh, petitions from the community, there is, uh, departments do reach out, uh, depending if there's questions, if there's follow-up. Uh, Mr. Tapp is very engaged with all groups that come forward with any requests that look at, uh, levels of service or scheduling or Sunday service in, uh, Transit. So, um, I wouldn't be surprised if he is familiar with, uh, the group and the petition. If he's already had conversations, I'm not sure, but I wouldn't be surprised if he has. But we would follow up with that as well.
Okay, good. Because I, I certainly make the motion that the, the report happened. But, um, if, um, if possible, I would like Ms. Key to be included in on the report for her engagement's sake. So that's my motion, to be, be sure she's captured. Okay.
Great. So there's a seconder for that. Counselor Ebert, any further discussion on that motion? Yes, Madame Clerk.
The recommendation is that council refer this online petition to administration for a report.
Discussion, Counselor McIntosh.
I would expect this report for the next meeting because, uh, I believe the same group presented the same petition three years ago. Mr. Tapp gave us a thorough report. And I understand, uh, Mr. Sherman before him had the same report. So it's, uh, just recycling the report.
I'm going to turn to Madame CAO around a timeline.
I'm trying to be funny here.
Through you, Madame Mayor. The report will be on the next meeting. Any further discussion about this motion? On the phone?
Run.
Run, Madame Mayor.
All in favor? Against? Against? Carried. Do you want to go to the resolution?
Yes. Uh, so the resolution is a leave of absence for Counselor Justin Towndale. Whereas Counselor Justin Towndale is a member of the primary reserve in the Canadian Armed Forces and must complete development phase training. And whereas Counselor Justin Towndale will not be able to attend council meetings during his training, now therefore be it resolved that council authorize Counselor Justin Towndale to be absent from council and committee meetings from June 20th to September 4th, 2020.
So we need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Gardner.
I'm moving.
Oh, Counselor Gardner's moving. Counselor Bergeron will you second?
Yes, I would. Seconder already.
All right. Any discussion concerning this motion? Counselor Bennett.
I fully support the motion. I'm just wondering for clarity, uh, or for accuracy, I guess. Um, should we not backdate the start time? Because he's been gone for a COVID deployment for a while. So would that, would that be, should that, should the date be different? Or is this okay?
My understanding is these are the dates that he provided, but I'll turn to the, uh, CAO or to the clerk for confirmation of that.
Uh, the resolution is drafted per the information that Counselor Towndale provided to us.
Okay. I was just, just curious if it, if it had to be there, but that's okay.
Counselor Hollingsworth.
Really just a question, Your Worship, because I don't know. Um, in terms of a person, and it doesn't matter to the individual, Counselor Towndale or anybody else for that matter, when someone takes a leave of absence, do we fill their seat? Do we just operate with less people? And that, like, as an extension, if, if four counselors, as, as an example, all took a leave of absence at the same time, like, how do we, what do we do? Would we just operate with just that many less counselors? Or when it comes to things like quorum and two-thirds majority votes and all of those kind of provisions?
So Madame Clerk and then Madame CAO, if you want, both of you are looking at each other.
Sure. So technically, it is possible that four, uh, would request a leave of absence, but ultimately council members are the ones who vote on the motion. So if you felt having four of them were too, too much to be away, then you could defeat that kind of request. And no, we don't replace them for a short amount of time that way.
One other question for clarity's sake. What are the consequence, not, not, I, I support the, the resolution. So please don't misunderstand, but what are the consequences of, of not supporting the resolution? What if council said, no, we don't want to, we don't want to support this resolution?
Through you, Madame Mayor. Then he would have to make the choice of whether to come to the meetings or?
Suffers whatever.
Three, three consecutive months away from council would, um, uh, cause a declaration of a vacant seat.
Okay. Just for clarification. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Madame Clerk.
Any further discussion?
I do, Madame Mayor. I just had a question as well, sort of related to Counselor Bennett, but he asked it first. Do we not look back on, to the time that he's been away as a counselor? I don't think, I think he's, like, how far back has he been gone? And now adding, now adding an extension to it? Just for clarification.
Right. Madame Clerk, do you have those dates?
If I remember correctly, the first meeting that Counselor Towndale missed was April 7th, April 8th. I don't remember the exact day, but it was the first one in April.
Counselor Dupell.
And so it's three months of consecutive missed meetings?
It hasn't been three months, but if, if, if it were three months, then my understanding from what the clerk said is that it, there is a vacancy, an automatic vacancy after that time?
Through you, Madame Mayor. I'd have to check the municipal act. I think council will have to do the declaration as a, as a whole.
Got it. Counselor Dupell.
Fine. I just wanted the clerk to finish because technically we're looking at pretty much a five-month leave of absence.
So the leave would start from June 20th is what he's saying, right?
Yes, but he's been away since April 9th, or the date that the clerk provided.
Mm-hmm. Madame Clerk, is there any, are there any rules around how long a leave of absence can be requested?
I don't believe so, Madame Mayor, but it might impact, I think you'd have to check with HR to see if it would impact a salary.
Madame CAO, do you have anything to add to that?
So a counselor can miss three months of meetings before it triggers, um, potentially an action from council. So I believe that what is occurring this evening is Counselor Towndale's bringing forward a request from council to approve a leave of absence moving forward from, uh, June the 20th to, uh, September, uh, September the 4th. So I think that, that resolution is pretty straightforward. I, I think we do understand that he has been away for the last couple of months. However, uh, he has been allowed to be away because the municipal act does not require any action for a period up to three months. So I'm not sure if that answers.
Thank you, Madame CAO.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. And another question is that it's leave without pay?
Madame CAO.
Through you, Madame Mayor. So with this resolution, it would be, uh, leave without pay.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Grant.
Remind me, uh, this for clarification, the period of time you can be absent without approval, I thought it was always three meetings. And not, what do we, what are we saying here now as three months?
Madame Clerk.
Uh, through you, Madame Mayor. For a council seat is three consecutive months. It's common practice for committee members, if they miss three meetings, then, um, you address it at a committee level, not for a council but for a lay member.
So it's, uh, it's three months, you said?
Three consecutive months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gardner.
Just a comment. I've said this before. I want, I really want to wish them well. Uh, they're stepping into some COVID, uh, long-term care facilities and working with people who are ill already. So I want to wish them, uh, good health and wish them well. So.
Any other comments, questions?
I will, uh, echo Counselor Gardner's comments. I, I know that Counselor Towndale is deployed currently in a long-term care facility in Ontario, uh, and, uh, will then spend, um, these months that he's asking a leave for, um, with further training as part of his, uh, process with the military. So we do, uh, wish him well.
All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried. Thank you.
So Madame Mayor, we'll move on to tenders. The first one is a joint tender for the supply and delivery of winter highway course salt with the recommendation that this joint tender for the supply and delivery of winter highway course salt be awarded for a two-year period with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods to Compass Minerals Canada Corporation from Mississauga at the total bid price of $1,770,0574.40.
Moved by. Counselor Grant, seconded by. Counselor McDonald, any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Carried.
Tender 20T24 Reconstruction of York Street from 7th Street West to 9th Street West with the recommendation that this tender be awarded to Cornwall Gravel Company Limited from Cornwall at the total bid price of $1,544,846.10.
Moved by. Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Grant. Any discussion? Counselor Mack.
Just a question, is this, seems late to be starting this. Uh, or has it started?
Madame CAO?
Sorry? No, it hasn't started. We can, uh, refer it to Mr. Fathrip for his comments on timing.
Uh, through you, Madame Mayor. Um, we believe we certainly have enough time left in the construction season, uh, to complete the work for this, uh, for this project.
All in favor? On the phone?
In favor. In favor.
Carried.
And tender 20T25 EMS Roof Replacement with the recommendation that this tender be awarded to Paris Di Stefano Construction and Design Services from Cornwall at the total bid price of of $948,543.47.
Moved by. Councillor Gardner, seconded by. Councillor Bennett, discussion, questions? Councillor Grant?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious as to, we've had a lot of problems, obviously, with this, this issue. And do, how do we define if a company is, is qualified to, to do these, this type of repair? Because that's a, it's a big job. It's a, flat roofs are a real tough, tough thing to do. So I, this, I don't know how big this company is. I know they're local and it's good that they're local, but I hope they're qualified.
I'll start with Madam CAO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So certainly within our purchasing documents, there's going to be criteria that they would have to meet. I'm going to refer the questioning over to either Mrs Bailey or Mr DeWitt, who would oversee part of that project for their comments.
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, within the tender documents, we would look for a scope and size of other work they've completed and also reference checks are, are completed as well.
So they've, they've completed this type of construction in the past?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I, I didn't review the, the tenders myself. Maybe Mr DeWitt can comment.
Mr DeWitt?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Paris Distefano is a very reputable company here in Cornwall, and I know from personal experience that they did the roofing at the water purification plant 10 years ago, and it's, there's been no issue. And I would not be concerned with regard to their performance.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions? Councillor Gardner?
Who's paying for this? We've had some issues. Is the city on the hook for all of it?
Madam CAO?
So through you, Madam Mayor. City is paying for this contract. The matter that you're referring to would be subject to further discussions and a closed meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor. In favor.
Carried.
In favor.
Thank you.
We have no new business motions, Madam Mayor. So passing of bylaws, the bylaws 2020-77 to 80 inclusive, listed on the agenda, are being presented to council for adoption.
Moved by. Councillor Grant and councillor McDonald, any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you.
We have two, oh, Madam Mayor, did you want to find out if there's reports from committees of council?
Yep. Any reports from committees of council? Madam CAO, did you want to make any kind of comment about COVID-19 at this point in terms of how the city's doing? Not going to entertain any motions related to this, just asking if the CAO has any updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have learned more information late in the day today about a stage two, what that will mean for municipalities. There certainly is going to be, by the end of the week, the ability for more restrictions lifted, more opening. Gatherings will be changed from a limit of five people to 10 people. There is an opportunity for municipal pools to potentially open and splash pads, as well as different services within our community, with personal services such as Harrison Lawns, everybody's talking about that these days. So there are quite a few changes on the horizon, I think, in the week ahead. We are going to be busy reviewing that. We are not currently ready to open our municipal pools and our splash pads. We will want to continue to engage with Dr Paul and the Health Unit to clearly understand how parameters need to be taken to make sure that we open these areas safely to allow, to allow, I think, some enjoyment by, but also being able to manage it from a, a crowd perspective. So there is a lot, I think, going on in the week ahead, but I also look at it very positively. There's opportunities for restaurants to potentially open up their outdoor patios. So I think that all of these are very positive indications that I think there's going to be, I think, more activity in our community. Hopefully it's done safely and, and so thank you for that opportunity, just to mention a few brief comments.
Thank you. I, at this point in the agenda, I'll always allow that because as much as we are, we did a lot of regular business tonight, as we, as we should. COVID-19 continues to be a challenge, not only for community members, but for city administration and city staff. So it's an ongoing file that requires a lot of attention. And this is good news, but the road to recovery is going to be rocky for businesses, for residents, and for city, city staff, city employees. So thank you for that update. The Recovery Task Force is coming, so stay tuned, very shortly. Any other reports, committees of council? Madam Clerk?
We have two notices of motion. The first one is a bylaw to prohibit open air burning of solid flues within the boundaries of the municipality and to repeal bylaw 2014-63. Our second one is memorandum of understanding with Beyond21, whereas Beyond21 offers a valuable service for residents of Cornwall who have specific needs, and whereas Beyond21 relies predominantly on fundraising as its principal source of revenue, and whereas the services provided are not offered by the city of Cornwall, whereas a more consistent revenue stream would allow Beyond21 to offer a more comprehensive service for its membership. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Cornwall enter discussions with the board of Beyond21 with the objective to create a memorandum of understanding between the city of Cornwall and Beyond21. Now therefore be it further resolved that administration report the results of these discussions prior to budget deliberations of 2021.
So these are notices of motion. You have now notice. You can speak to each other, to the community about both of these issues, so that we have a full debate at the next meeting. Again, I encourage you to speak to each other and to community about this before the next meeting. Madam Clerk?
We are presenting the unfinished business listing for June 8th, to be received.
Moved by. Councillor Abay, seconded by councillor Grant. Any discussion? All in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you.
And we're also presenting our bylaw 81 as a confirming bylaw.
Moved by. Councillor Bennett, councillor Gardner, all in favor? On the phone?
In favor.
Councillor Dupell?
Sorry, in favor.
Thank you. Carried.
That is all for our reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'd like to turn to the CAO to make some comments about some major changes, not only for the city, but for two people who have been part of her senior leadership team for a while.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I would really like to take a couple of minutes to recognize Chief Wazin and Mrs Stacey Ferguson for their commitment and their roles in the corporation during the past several years. So Chief, you have been with us for five years. I have tremendously enjoyed working with you. You have a certain amount of energy and enthusiasm that is well-received by the senior team. You've been very engaged in our community, as you could see from a report that we had this evening. I do truly believe that you've always had the community's safety and best interests at heart in your role as fire chief. And I know that I will miss you. I know that our senior team will miss you as well. So the chief has taken on a new role in Clarence Rockland. We wish you certainly all of the best. We have a few more days before your departure, but you're close enough that we can stay in close contact, and we look forward to still working together through municipal peers, if we can. If I could also recognize Ms Ferguson this evening, Stacey has been with us for four years, came from Durham region, and really, I think, bringing a different perspective to social services and having certainly a big depth of background in, in OW for sure. So, and it was right around the time where we had this very challenging system that we were trying to get up and running in Cornwall called SAMZ, and it was one of the most difficult projects, I think, the province ever put forward through our social services division. Stacey has been instrumental, working with various groups in the community, a great liaison between the province and our city, our city department for social services, and again, dealing with a population that is the most vulnerable in our community. I do believe for both Stacey and Pierre, what has been most pleasing to work with them is their willingness and their wanting to be engaged with other city departments regardless, regardless of what the matter is. So we have had many opportunities to work together, whether it's, whether it's through COVID-19 as a most recent example, but you both will be truly missed, both on a professional level, but also your counterparts on the other side of the room here are going to be disappointed to see you go. So I for one would like to thank you very much for your commitment and your dedication to the corporation over the last several years, but, but more importantly, I do want to recognize the opportunities that you have, and Stacey will have an opportunity with the province. Those are both great career moves for both of you, and we absolutely were pleased to have you with us, and we wish you all of the best, and remember the city of Cornwall in your days ahead.
Do either of you want to say anything? Ms Ferguson?
Okay, I promise I'm not going to, I'm not going to cry, but I probably will.
Oh, please go ahead.
Thanks. Thank you very much. It was a big move for me to come to Cornwall from the region, and it's an absolutely lovely place to live. I will be staying in Cornwall for quite some time because the opportunity at the province of Ontario is allowing me to work from home. So I will be living in Glen Walter, looking at that beautiful river. So I still will be around, and I hope to run into you in the grocery store, et cetera. But I had a great opportunity here, and I learned a lot, working with this council and the previous council, as well as the senior leadership team, including Madam CAO. So again, I thank you, and I will miss working with you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Pierre.
Chief Wazin?
I promised clerk I wouldn't cry. Listen, it's been, it's been a busy five years.
Please cry.
It's been a busy five years. It's been a lot of fun. We've had a lot of fun. We've moved a lot of files. And I think, I think together we've built, we've built something that's pretty special. I'm, you know, I, I'm, at any given time, you hope that you, you kind of move the bar forward a little bit, and you leave things a little better than you pick them up, and, and that's what you can expect from, from any manager, I suppose. And, and I, you know, I hope we've done that, but I can tell you, you know, you have a very capable fire service and some really, really great people in there. And I, you know, I can only see, I can only see success, and I'll be watching for sure. Thank you.
Any comments from council?
Councillor Abay, I saw you taking notes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, Chief, congratulations on your new position. You've accomplished quite a bit in five years. Some fairly large, like you've mentioned, cases. And not only the things that you've achieved in, in the five years, but there's a lot that you've set us up for. There's a lot of great things coming forward because of your leadership, and I, and I really want to thank you for that and everything you've accomplished in five years. Stacey, I'm not going to cry. So Stacey and I have had the opportunity to work quite closely together. And I just want to tell everybody who may not have had the opportunity to work as closely as I have, that she has been an incredible leader and champion for our community. Why am I crying?
It's okay to cry. There's crying at council meetings.
I know, I know. Sorry.
Allowed.
So, sorry. I'm okay. You cried first, so it's your fault. She's helped me in my career, in progressing the Social Development Council to new heights. She has been very progressive in her way of, of leading, progressive in her way of accomplishing change within the community, and quite sad to see her go, obviously, but I respect you immensely, Stacey, and I'm really excited to hear about your future endeavors, and I'm sure whatever it is, and I look forward to finding out what it is, you will accomplish just as much leadership and passion and dedication in that position as you did here. And so I just want to thank you for everything and really look forward to staying in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Councillor McDonald?
I would like to say...
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll start with, I'll start with councillor McDonald, then I'll go to you, councillor Dupell.
Okay, well...
No problem.
In the interest of full disclosure, I am not the crying type, so I won't.
You are not.
But I just want to say, I spoke earlier about Chief Wazin's leadership, and so I won't repeat myself in that discourse. So I would like to make a comment though about Ms Ferguson. You can imagine how many layers of changes there have been in the Housing Corporation Act of the province of Ontario over the years. And I have to say that in the four years that I've worked with Ms Ferguson in Cornwall area Housing Corporation, there has never been an occasion when she has been challenged that she hasn't revealed an absolutely encyclopedic grasp of all the arcane bits of policies and laws that affect the housing corporation. So good luck to both of you, and you'll both be missed.
Thank you. Councillor Dupell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I would just like to wish you all the very best in your new position in Clarence Rockland. I had the opportunity to work with you, as you said, on many files, and I can attest that you have certainly been a mover with moving files, and truly appreciate it, and felt that you were always very supportive. Ms Ferguson, I want to wish you all the best in moving forward with your new career with the province. I know that from my social service, work that I do, working with vulnerable people, I can say that I was truly impressed over the last four years, and I don't know if, if people have realized, Ms Ferguson, I could send you an email at any time and I had an answer instantly, or a response, at least to say I would get back to you, and that will truly be, but I'd like to wish both of you, from my family to both of yours, all the best.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Mack?
I want to say right off the bat, I was only kidding when I called you quitters. I had the opportunity to work with Pierre on the Fire Master Plan, and that was pretty good, that was an experience. And anyway, we, it was a really good piece of work. And my exposure to, Stacey's been with the Housing Authority, and I'll back up what Elaine said, she's an encyclopedia, and she's got all the answers, and, and as Morris said, too, anytime you send her an email, the response comes right back. And I think it's a credit to Mrs Adams and probably Jeff, who hire these people. You know, I've always said from the start of this, in six years, we've got such a strong senior team here, really, it was an eye-opener for me when it came to council. And Shakespeare would say, Godspeed, and enjoy your new careers.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close out by saying that, yes, I agree with all of you, particularly councillor McDonald in speaking of Stacey Ferguson's in-depth knowledge. There's an expertise there that is absolutely impressive. And I agree with councillor Dupell that no email or call ever goes unanswered. The recent one, and probably the last one we'll have, was when the province announced that our area would get $4. something million dollars... was when the province announced that our area would get $4. something million as the social services release fund. I remember getting that email at about, I don't know, maybe 9:00 PM, 9:30 PM, and I messaged, because I didn't quite believe that amount, and I messaged Stacy, and she pretty much answered, answered instantaneously, probably just a couple of words, too. Yeah. So thank you for choosing Cornwall and continuing to stay here for a bit. Spend some money, will you? Okay, good. Chief Wazin, yes, your work has been very stellar, particularly in terms of that zest for communication that you have. You know, I won't forget all of those communications that you put out in innovative and new creative ways for the community. I did thank you for your work on the landlord licensing, and that was, that was also quite impressive. J'ai toujours apprécié nos conversations. Il y avait toujours un intérêt pour une discussion respectueuse intéressante. Alors, j'ai beaucoup aussi aimé travailler avec toi. J'ai aimé les discussions qu'on a eues au fil des années. Alors merci. To both of you, it is very difficult sometimes to work for the city of Cornwall. It's not an easy thing. It's a bit of a fishbowl. And so we are held here around this table and in this room to a higher standard. It's not easy. So I thank you both for meeting that challenge. And we wish you, as councillor Mack said, and Shakespeare, Godspeed. Merci. Motion to adjourn. Councillor Ebert? Councillor McDonald? All in favor?
In favor.
Favor.
Thank you.